In today's presentation. Well, let's get that out of the way. All right. Today's presentation, I'm going to go over the project objectives for Lake Milo master plan. The traffic analysis and results, the two concept options that were created for the project. Part of the engagement strategy and that were the results of that and then the preferred option. So to clarify, the study area for Lake Milo that we're looking at would be starting at Prospect Street, just north of the town limits here. And headed up 1.25 kilometers to Maple Hill Lane or about the Villas facility driveway. So that's the stretch we're focusing on today. And that's what the the concepts and the design options are for. So you can see that I've also highlighted here the Yarmouth District Rail Trail. Part of the objectives of this project was making sure that there was an active transportation. Plan to connect the two creates some type of a circuitous loop. And provide access on those two ends, as I pointed out over here closer to the Lake Milo Aquatic Club. And then over to the Villas facility for some future planning further along the the road. So the project objectives were to develop the master plan for Lake Milo Active Transportation, which would involve identifying a feasible option along Lake Milo Stretch. Providing a holistic active transportation approach and putting forth a 30% designer or a concept design plan for a preferred option with local support. And with all of that, we also provided a implementation plan, a preliminary implementation plan that could be used. Part of the project process, we reviewed the background and existing conditions along Lake Milo or Highway One. We started phase one of engagement in May 2021, and that was with our sub consultants. Upland, who is not here today, but they provided a what we heard report and some information in the master plan as well. Active transportation design options were put forth and then phase two of engagement, those were presented in October of 2021. And then the preferred design option for bike lane pedestrian improvements along Lake Milo with a final recommendation went forward in December. And today we are presenting to council on that final recommended design option. So a quick analysis of the existing conditions along Highway One or along Lake Milo. It's important to point out some things that I just wanted to run through quickly with you all. Highway one is a provincially owned and maintained arterial highway in the study area that we are looking at today. It has two speed limits in this particular section. It's 50 kilometers per hour closer towards town. That's about one third of the stretch that we're looking at. And then it goes up to 60 kilometers per hour for for the rest of the sections. And on average in 2018, the volumes for vehicle traffic was 7,080 in a day. Which is pretty common for a two lane roadway. It's it's a little high, but it's it's what was recorded in 2018. And since then, I'm sure it hasn't. Gone much higher or very too much just with the pandemic and what we've been seeing in areas like this. Some of the constraints that we were focusing on during the design were the property boundaries that come right up to Highway One on the east side of the roadway. There are quite a few utilities underground and overhead. Specifically, there was that Highway One guard rail as well. That's along the lakeside that we were looking at as a constraint. And then there's a few environmental constraints that should be considered along the shoreline. Just as the design moved forward that we had to consider. And just to get into some of the details, everybody is probably aware of the situation on Highway One, that it's a two lane roadway, about 7.5 meters wide of paved roadway. On the east side, there's a small varying shoulder width of 1.5 meters on average with the with usually a deep ditch before hitting those that right of way line to the properties. On the west side, that 1.9 meter usable shoulder, which looks very advantageous to take on for an active transportation plan, which is. Something great, but also there for a reason. It's a usable shoulder for pulling off of, since this is a municipally or provincially owned roadway. So that's. The purpose of that shoulder right there, but it is an unpaved shoulder before 1.5 meter spacing for a guard rail and then the drop off into Lake Milo, which kind of varies at some. Locations with some with there. And it's also important to note, sorry, that there are no sidewalks along anywhere here, but you will often see people using that usable shoulder. For any type of back of transportation, whether that be running or walking. Something else important to note for this project is the provincial Blue Root in Yarmouth has been identified through here. So for those who are unaware, the Blue Root is a cycling network, which is an effort by the province to provide accessible facilities for cyclists, making important connections throughout the province. And some of the objectives for that Blue Root is similar to those for Lake Milo, especially for cycling specifically. And so the Blue Root is identified along Highway One north of Hebron. See if that clarifies it, the blue line there. So it's it's identified to be proposed to come through here. North of Hebron and then is to be determined, but is looking to be an on road route opportunity, which is proposed to follow the lakeside road into Chagogen to the west. Over here. On the east side of the lakes, the route is proposed to follow the rail trail ending at the town limit and then picking up south of the town. In the Tuskit Falls Trail. So outside of town, it's it's still just proposed. All of this is just to be determined what this will look like. But it's it's good that the province has already determined that this area is a good spot for active transportation for the Blue Root to come through because that kind of garnered some support. From the provincial side to see this AT facility come along. So we'll get into those details a bit later, but I wanted to point that out. And just quickly, I mentioned the traffic volumes along Highway One earlier are a bit high, but not terrible. From looking at the intersection here at Prospect Street, which is a stop control to Prospect and Highway One just has the free movement. Those volumes weren't too terrible that there wasn't significant queuing that could be noticed. Really something else that was requested of us was to take a look at the speeding along Highway One. In this section where especially where it's 50 kilometers per hour. We noticed a bit of speeding from from those vehicles coming in and out of town. And then as you head further further north, where it goes up to 60 kilometers per hour. There's a little bit less speeding, but it's probably just because the speed limit's up a little higher. So that was just something to note that we picked up on in the report and have made some recommendations towards in the final design option. So the two concept options, we came up with these two concept options for along Lake Milo here, and I have the cross sections for both. I will say that they're they're both Blue Root options. We've we've made sure to consider the Blue Root. Which is again, that provincial cycle network through here and how to adapt that into the design. That way there is that provincial support and it would really bring those two objectives together into one in a space that. This is quite a unique stretch along the lake and with that extra 1.9 meter of shoulder space. There was a lot of opportunity to really combine those two objectives. And so these are Blue Root options. Where we're making sure that we identify these two options with the Blue Root on there. And so this option one will show you that there is a four meter multi use path along the lake that we're proposing. This multi use path or multi use trail is for anybody, any user, any active transportation user. So it could be walkers. Bikers, runners, anybody in a wheelchair or on wheels of any sort. Can come through and use this space. Four meters is quite wide, so it would be very easy going for anybody accessing the trail. As you can see here, this is the existing guard rails. We're proposing to to move it in quite a bit here to the red. And then a few. A few meters here for paved shoulders on either side of the roadway and narrowed lanes to 3.5 meters. So that gives a paved shoulder of 1.2 meters on either side of the road. And then the the two travel lanes, as I mentioned. We're also proposing a bit of fill for this option into the lakes. That's just something to note. And then a holding this existing top of ditch on the east side, so not messing with anything on the the property owner's side. Option two, also called the Blue Root Option Two, similar to Option One, but I will point out the differences here. So the multi use path or the multi use trail is still open to any type of user. So any biker, any walker, any wheelchair user or somebody on wheels. Can go through and use this at a leisurely pace. It's just at three meters now. So it's a little tighter, but it's still spacious enough for people to go along and mosey along the lake and then enjoy their experience there. The guard rail is shifted only slightly in this option, but still needs some shifting in towards the roadway. To use that space there. And then in this option, we're showing these 1.5 meter paved shoulders. That those shoulders being wider at 1.5 then makes them available for bike lane use. The there would be a unidirectional, which means one way bike lanes on either side of the roadway. That cyclists could also use. So cyclists have the option to use both the trail and the roadway. However. That you would expect that those who are on the roadway would be going at a faster pace, going for exercise. It wouldn't be as smooth or leisurely of an experience as just moseying along the trail. But. That being said, this option also provides cyclists and pedestrians both on the multi use trail. And as you can see, the narrowed travel lanes here as well, the 3.5 meters and. And the fill here into the lake is not as exaggerated as it was in option one, since we're not moving everything in as much. So there were two phases of engagement that were held during the spring, the summer and the fall, completed in the fall. And I'll go through those quickly. Those were hosted by Upland and assisted by Englobe. An engagement in the phase one of engagement activities, it was mostly a stakeholder outreach. So there was an online questionnaire that went out. That went out to landowners and business owners. And we also hosted a meeting with the Nova Scotia Public Works where we discussed the Blue Root and some of the options that they would really see viable along Lake Milo to to get that support for the Blue Root. Within that engagement approach, what we heard in response were. That the current conditions along Lake Milo make users feel unsafe and reluctant to use the route as it is. So there was strong support for the project and. Really, as long as accessibility for all was was offered, then there was support from all. Along the project and along the for the property owners and the landowners along there. Something else that was important that came up during the first phase of engagement was preserving access to the water. So there's a few breaks in the guard rail currently there. And as I understand it, those are kind of lake access points, points just for for folks to either use it in the summertime. There used to be an old boat launch that I don't think is really used as much in the kind of in the middle of Highway One there, but but it's still important to. Hold on to some of those openings because there's a few wharfs that were put down there, not not owned by the public or sorry, not owned privately. Only owned privately is what I'm trying to say. And and managed by those folks. So it was important to maintain those. During phase two of engagement, there was a presentation with the Q and A session to the public. And then there was another survey that went out and that was at the I was in the summer time of that survey went out. And in October, it looks like. So there was three user group discussions as well. Those user groups were swimmers, fishers and boaters. The other user group were runners and walkers, and then the other user group were cyclists. And so during phase two of engagement, the two options that I had just gone through were presented. And those different user groups were questioned on those options and what they liked about them, what they didn't like about them, what they would change. And then the public was also surveyed about it. Landowners were also reached out to again, and their feedback again was on the guard rail on the water access and making sure those were there, but otherwise both options were were. Viable for them. But as I mentioned here in the public survey, there was actually 53% towards option one, which had the larger multi use path. 47% towards option two, which had the smaller multi use path, but with bike lanes on Highway One. And mostly it sounded like that response was due to. People misunderstanding that cyclists could use both the trail and the roadway and wouldn't be forced to use the roadway roadway. They just wanted biker comfort in in both options. So this is just how the. The the numbers fell, but it's quite even if you if you look at the numbers there. So some another question that came up in the engagement survey was what else people wanted to see along Lake Milo. What amenities should be provided? What what other considerations now that a design option is coming forth? Would look like along Lake Milo. And so some of the top responses, as you can see here. Over 80% mentioned that they would like to see benches added along Lake Milo. And garbage cans added along Lake Milo. I guess for that long stretch, they don't want to see it littered along the path, knowing more people would start using it. Lighting over 70% said they would like to see lighting added along the stretch. And then along with those top three, we saw landscaping and beautification, some look off locations, some signage along Lake Milo and then. Picnic tables over 20% said that. Less than 25% mentioned wayfinding signage, some sheltered seating that would that would provide like. Shelter over the the bench spots or some picnic tables. Bike racks were mentioned and then the bicycle fix it areas and other such things. Something else in the survey that was mentioned was ensuring that the multi use pathway was a paved pathway and not necessarily. Like sidewalk concrete blocks just for the rivets and for a smooth access for all those on wheels, including cyclists, wheelchair users, anybody's coming from the villa. That that came up a lot to consider that some type of asphalt pavement or just one smooth pavement could be used along the multi use pathway there. So the preferred option. After going through a guiding principles evaluation exercise, we came up with which of the two would would be the preferred option to put forward. So we had mentioned there was the first option. Which was the Blue Root Option One with the four meter multi use path with all users on the path. And then the Blue Root Option Two, which is the multi use path at three meters along the lake and then paved shoulders, which would allow for bike lanes along Highway One. So after doing a quick guiding principle evaluation exercise, which helped rank the preferred options against one another. We decided that option two is actually the recommended design option to put forward here. And just to run through some of the criteria that was used for how we ranked the two options against one another. We looked at the pedestrian realm. We looked at the biking realm and the the comfort there for bikers, the the pedestrian comfort along the two options. Accessibility for for both of the options and landscaping opportunities. And to be fair, the two options were. They ranked very closely and in every criteria, they didn't really vary too much. It was just. More the pedestrian and the biking realm and where where they varied there. So because in option two, there are. There are two spaces for cyclists to move off to. They could be on the highway or they could be on the multi use path. It gave both bikers a sense of comfort and space as well as anybody who's walking or using. Wheels in another in another way on the multi use path just gave them more space and more comfort for what to expect in each environment, whether on the highway or on the trail. So that's how the two fell. And that's why we the option two was the recommended option based off of the project objectives. So just to show you a quick snap of the concept plan, which we will get into a little detailed later, but I just wanted to point out. This is at the entrance of the trail, the proposed trail. This is Prospect Street here towards the south, and then this is Highway One with Lake Milo up here at the top of the screen. So those would be the marked bike lanes. You would expect to see that there would be Blue Root signage for these bike lanes. To identify that that is the location for the provincial system. As well, there's a crosswalk here now, which is the overhead flashing RA5s is what they're called. And that's the crossing system used there now with a push button. What's been recommended in the report is to upgrade these to. The rectangular rapid flashing beacons is what they're called, which is on the side of the roadway. Push button would be activated by the user and then the the bright flashing beacons would go off in both directions for vehicles to stop. However, it could also be just an upgraded RA5 system, which is what is out there currently. So users of both types, cyclists and pedestrians could cross here and enter the roadway, or if they're coming off of Highway One, they could. Enter this ramp here, the cyclist could enter the ramp here and then to the three meter multi use trail. Also notable is the guard rail is here to separate from traffic. The trail is at the level of the roadway, so it would be at the same height as the vehicles, but this guard rail would be here as a separation. Some landscaping here and some landscaping opportunities at the entrance here would would be there for a separation between pedestrians, cyclists and. The vehicles. And then on the opposite side, you'd also see a barrier rail added as a barrier between the lake and pedestrian users on the path. They showed you the crossing there. And the new landscaping. So as I mentioned earlier with the engagement survey results, when benches were mentioned, sheltered picnic tables. Lighting, this would be a good opportunity where in our design plans, we've only shown just bushes and trees as new landscaping opportunities. But this would be an opportunity for an entrance to the trail. You would see the signage and zero kilometer marker. You could see benches added here or a look off point. So there's a few locations like that that Tim will go through when he goes through the plans that. We could, we could add those types of features. So I'll pass it off to Tim. He's going to go over the high level planning and and other details of the project.
Thank you, Adriana. I was kind of enjoying your presentation, so I kind of now I'm called upon. So as everyone knows, I think just to state the obvious here, but this was one of the. The most supported projects, I think that we've been involved with with because everyone agrees that they would like to have something along here. So. It's it's just a question of working out how we do that. And as as far as implementation, it it does take a few sources here. A few folks that that are pushing in the same direction, and I think we all are. So. What it would entail is is upgrades to Highway One. And so that means, you know, that's a provincial highway. So therefore, you know, those guys are critical in this whole solution. So. We have engaged those folks to to take a look, a preliminary look is same as the rest of it that we've done. There's no real deal details. However, we have. We have looked at some things and they look like they're highly developed, but there are some details that need to get flushed out in this process. But the first one is to look at how we can. Identify or define those trails. The the shoulders, the paved shoulders for bikes, getting the center line moved over, getting the the guard rail and so on, moved in and creating. Some some space for the trail. So what it does entail is that shoreline infill, which is, you know, as as you know, I mean, this is a very, it's a beautiful area, great opportunity. But it does mean that, you know, that shoreline has to get filled in so that we can create some space over there. And. So the way we've tied this together is we think there's at least. Minimum three opportunities here of how to curve this. This project up. One of them is is the highway work. How can we get that guard rail where it needs to be? That is going to. There's enough space right now that, you know, you can kind of move to one side, do half of it. And and be able to keep the traffic moving, which is going to be paramount when this thing is put into into construction. So we think that is sort of a phase. The next part is the AT trail, which that can happen sort of independently. If we get the 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 roadwork done. You can kind of go independently and carve that up into as many pieces as you need to, but it has to start. And as you get going along, you know, the vehicles will be able to access and and you could carve that into as many pieces as you want, depending on funding. So. As far as. I think what needs to happen is as far as what can be funded, how much money can be secured and where how far that will go and and those things are yet to be determined. So I think. That is. That is sort of the 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 plan of of approach, you know, the the next stage is to get a detailed design done. But have that discussion to say, okay, what can we reasonably be looking at here so that we can. Afford to to build this? How far can we go with it? So, yeah, so that that is, that is the critical path for this project. So you can see from this, we start and we've got two sections. It starts on the upper level at the boat club. And you can see as it as it goes down, there is in some areas, there is. Land that that does jet out into the lake. In other areas, there isn't. And I think, you know, that. Cross section that we had that showed that infill does offer, you know, some some filling that has to happen. Other areas, we don't need it. We just need to bring that up and and there will be some land there. But we have to create enough land so we can get that three meters on there, get the buffers done there. Get the roadway sections in there. So as you see, you move along, there are areas. I believe this particular one, I can't see it very large, but there is the area where. The pumping station is. So that's an area where we have to loop out around the pumping station. It's close to the road. There's not enough room there for the trail. So we have to go into the. Yeah, that's this one here in the bottom. We have to go out into the water a little more to still create that. There's a little bit of elevation difference there. We have to make sure that we maintain the the slopes. I think it's a 5% slope. So all users can comfortably navigate those. The trail. For the most part, this one is all going to stay up at road level. There may be places where it can venture at the top, maybe. Venture down in the a little lower, but for the most part, it's going to stay at the at the top edge. Some of these, and and I think they're they're shown by this, that is, I believe, the boat launch at the top. The the current one that was was used and it allowed vehicles to get down in there and and put their boats in the water. I don't believe that's as Adriana has mentioned, and I think you folks know, I don't believe it's used much anymore. They've got a better one up around the lake. So. So we we but we would still honor all of those openings so that the access from from the houses on the other side. And I know that we we spoke about that with the province, the transportation guys and and they didn't have any concerns. In fact, I think they were probably in in tune with all that as well. And as you get closer to the villa. It it opens up a little bit more and and it offers some some further opportunity as you get up up there a bit more, but you can see. How that fits into the existing lake. There is a little boundary there and it comes in and out and. But there is going to be overall infill required in the lake and that's that that involves some other folks, some environmental folks and and all of that to to make sure that we we get that plan properly. The other thing that that comes into play here and and then again, it's it's one of those things we did look at. Everything kind of looks like it's been developed at a high level, but we got to have a further, keep these things in mind. And that is the the power line that's along there. They have they have power poles on both sides of the road. And there is one along here as well. And a lot of those are are founded in the lake water and they have, you know, the corrugated steel with filled with rock. And one of the things that you have to make sure of is that you've got the clearance overhead for. For users to make sure that they maintain, I believe it's a 10 foot, three meters above the tallest the user. Between the bottom of the lines and and the top of the user. So those are things that will come up. We're with the way that we've looked at this is that. In a lot of areas, it is out in the water so that we we don't get right under it. However, there are a few spots along here where those lines come in. And they're on the shoreline and on the on the hill, the hill, the rise, the the road level that would. We would maintain those and and those ones, of course, are a little bit higher because they are on that on that level now. Some of the others are a little lower because they're founded in in the water. So. So those things will have to be detailed designed. In that stage of the project. So I think that's that's what we have to offer there.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. Thanks for listening to the presentation. Yeah, thanks, Tim. Thanks for listening to the presentation. And if you have any questions or discussion at this time, if there's any further detail that Tim and I can provide as well in the PowerPoint presentation, happy to share and go through that.
I think, Sheri, did you have your hand up first? No, you didn't. Okay, hi.
Thank you. Very interesting. What, a question I have for you is environmental issues. If we have to fill along that route, then, you know, have you been in contact with the environment and is that possibility or is that going to raise a lot of issues?
So we haven't been in contact with anybody, but we have a section of the report that goes through the different agencies provincially or others that would have to be consulted. And this just being the the concept design level. So this is kind of a preliminary thought process of who who Yarmouth will have to reach out to the timeline of what that looks like as well. There are some details provided throughout the permit or throughout the the plan report. So we we ourselves have not reached out to anybody as there is still was the preferred option that came forward and that being a deciding factor and what that actually means for Lake Milo and and the design along Lake Milo. What type of implications that's going to look like? So I would refer to the document when it's when those questions for environmentally start coming up, because there is definitely a section there that addresses those.
And the bass fishing tournament. Important things.
We're doing the hybrid meeting, so we have a counselor online. Lauren Cushing, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Worden. And I apologize for not being there, but I I had to, I had to come to Halifax on the weekend here. Again, I mentioned it before, Adrian and Tim, thank you very much for your presentation. A great a great project and well received by by the the citizens of the municipality and the stakeholders that are involved. As for the issues that do arise, there's always any issue that that arises, there's a solution for it. And and I'm sure we can with the experts as Tim and Adrian and their coworkers, I'm sure we'll be able to figure that out. So I'm not too concerned about the environmental parts. I am. But I know there's a solution for it. And and I've actually, I worked on projects before myself, where we had environmental issues and we were able to satisfy the satisfy the needs fairly easy. So and again, thank you very much. And thanks, Council for for being there and listening to what they have to say. Thank you.
Sheri.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You alluded to keeping traffic moving. And at the beginning of the presentation, I thought, oh, that's that's for me, it's a huge, you know, huge issue. So for you, could you explain how that is going to happen? How you plan to, how we plan to keep traffic moving so that we're not annoying everyone to and from the town of Yarmouth?
Are you specifically asking during construction or once the design's in place?
During construction, sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah. Thank you, Adriana. Yeah, no, no. One of the things that we've considered is is exactly that. There is enough width right now, just with where the guardrail is. Right now, that's quite a a large width. In fact, it's it's probably the width of it is is probably too great right now. So what you get is it encourages the folks that want to speed along there to speed because there is some space there. And they can see if there's anybody on the side of the road, so they just have at it and go by. And I think we witnessed that a bit. But there is quite a section there. I mean, it is not going to be exactly as it is now. Right now, it's through there, it's paved, it's in good shape and people go. But as a construction site, it will be part of the contractor's responsibility to make sure that two way traffic is maintained with that rail. And I I would suggest that we could leave it. I'm not sure that we can leave it. Or do we just push it out a little farther and still create the two lanes? But it is imperative, and I believe there is enough space there to to do first lane. We may need to do this in sections, of course, but to get to maintain traffic in in one section and to work in another and and sort of pave this to the central line and still keep traffic moving with the width that's there. Because there is quite a bit of of space there. But the lanes will be reduced, the speeds will be reduced, and they will be hoarding and putting some controls, traffic controls in place. But right from the edge of the of the shoulder where the ditch is right over to the the guardrail, as you can see, there's, you know, there's quite a bit of space in there, 1.5, 3.7. So those 3.7 meter lanes are, like I say, they they do promote people going quickly because there is the space there. They don't get the the factor that there is limited room. So that's one of the things that that's what we would see anyways. And I think we've checked out with one of our our contractors and they were, they were, they were consistent with that approach. So I think there is room.
Thank you. So if there are no other questions, I guess in terms of process, so the Lake Milo Steering Committee consisted of Counselor Cushing and John Bauer and Rick Allright were your citizen reps. And so they've had their last meeting. And they have a motion that's coming to council next week. Lauren, if you're still there, I don't know if you want to tell council what your recommendation was.
It was gone.
It was gone. John, do you want to let council know what your recommendation is?
We, we
I'm here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Well, our recommendation is going to be to bring forward to council for approval to move ahead with this this project and for getting some final costs and whatnot. So as we discuss, John, if you have something else to say, or Rick, if you have something to say, please, please do so.
No, that's just that, once again, we 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 were all in favor of option two at our last meeting. Which has already been stated by Adriana.
So it'll come forward as a recommendation from the steering committee, which was in their terms of reference. That was their mandate, was to make a recommendation to council. So it'll come forward and that'll be up to council, you know, how they want to receive it. And if if they receive the report and they want to add it to the horizon, then it's a whole separate body of work to figure out the how and the when.
That's correct, yeah. Big project, I know we can do it.
So, Mr. Chair, I want to thank Englobe. They were great vendors to the municipality, Tim and Adriana. And we got to know them really, really well. Tim has been in the community from time to time for many years. And Adriana is working with us a little bit on some other work. So I want to thank them for the work they did. And in particular, I don't, I think this is probably the last time I'm going to see Adriana for a while. Adriana is going on an extended leave next week. Her family's getting bigger. So she's going to take some time off for that. So from me to Tim and Adriana and to the steering committee, who was great to work with, I, from the staff, I want to thank you.
Thank you so much, Victoria. It was, it was great working with your staff and really enjoyed it and appreciate the well wishes since that's definitely happening next week.
She sounds ready.
Good stuff.
Yes. No, I appreciate you guys, all your support. I mean, I think this project, as I say, was was again, right from the start, everyone was in favor. It was just a question of how how can we do this? And you guys were fantastic to work with. Thank you.
Trevor?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody that's on the committee and council for moving this this far and can't wait till it's finished. And I can't, and I can't wait to beat John Bauer in a footrace.
We will, we will run one way and swim back the other.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for that. And so the recommendation will be coming forward to council next regular meeting. And once again, as Victoria said, thank you very much for all your work on this project. And we'll see where we go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Take care.
You have Jeff Courtney and April.
Hi, guys. Well, we've met, I've met most of you guys. I have do a little quick introduction for Courtney and April with Davis and McIntyre. They're the consultant archaeology company that I'm working very closely with on the Tuscan drawdown for Nova Scotia Power. And we'll go over a few things there. And it will just be pretty open as Courtney will go through. If you have any questions, don't be scared to interrupt. Because I know I'll be interrupting. There's a couple of things at the end of the presentation that I wanted to add. Actually, I might as well start right now. It's on my mind. As your, 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 your prayer, great. Thanks for letting, sharing that with us. That's, I think that's great. I just want to point out don't forget about archaeology assessment. I know you, you have your environmental impact that you have to do. And there's a head, if you do any type of infills or anything. But a small tabletop exercise to to make sure there's no archaeology there before you do any infills or any disturbance. I give you two examples of archaeology moving forward. There was West Ford Forestry was getting really close to a known burial site that we shut down the site working with the province and sent in archaeology to do an assessment prior to do any logging. Another one was Lands and Forestry started to build a site and April and Courtney and their crew had to go in and they are let's say two, three years behind their work schedule, what they wanted to get done to build a burn, a storage shed. Because they ended up destroying an archaeology site. So just, just putting that out there for food for thought as you're moving forward for anything that any type of engagement with the Mi'kmaq moving forward that we we're not, we don't want to hide anything. We don't, but we don't want anything destroyed. So I'll let there, I'll let Courtney, if you want to jump in there or April and introduce yourselves, and we'll start a little, little presentation for you guys.
Sure, I can jump in. My name is Courtney Glenn, and I'm a senior archaeologist with Davis McIntyre and Associates. And as Jeff said, we've been working on several pretty large projects in Acadia's territory, also sort of in the Yarmouth area in general, including Tuscan. And I guess I'll let April introduce herself.
Hi there. I'm April McIntyre. I'm the president at Davis McIntyre and Associates.
So I think our presentation is pretty informal. I do have a few images to share of some of the artifacts that we've found recently. But I think, Jeff, does it make sense to start with maybe, I don't know how familiar everybody is with the actual archaeology assessment process, as well as the Special Places Protection Act legislation?
Yeah, wherever, wherever you want to start, Courtney, let's let's start with the the initial assessment, what what you guys have to go through, your tabletop exercise, and then we'll go through down to the Special Protection Places Act.
Okay, do you want to take that, April?
Okay, sure. So there is a piece of legislation, it's a pretty little known piece of legislation in Nova Scotia known as the Special Places Protection Act. It's been around for a little over 40 years. And it not only protects archaeological sites in the province, but it also governs how the archaeological profession conducts itself. And the act extends to archaeological sites on land as well as underwater. And the crux of it is essentially that no person can lawfully disturb an archaeological site without a heritage research permit. And that's because a heritage research permit to conduct excavations in the province can only be issued to a qualified archaeologist who is bound to professional guidelines and requirements that must meet a certain standard. And when they say disturbance, they they don't, they don't mean just outright disturbance of an archaeological site. It also means removing an object, removing an artifact from a site. Even if it's just on the surface. And the reason for that is because once those objects are removed from the site, then you're losing not just the artifact itself, but you're losing crucial information about that, about the the artifact and the site. When were people here? What were they doing here? What was their environment like? And not to mention that these artifacts, many of these artifacts hold very important cultural and spiritual value to the Mi'kmaq. In its 40 years, the legislation has come a long way, but there's still a lot of work to be done. Educating and engaging. And it's not just archaeologists who are trying to do that. Communities like Acadia First Nation are working with developers and with municipalities. And with the provincial regulator, which is the Department of Communities, Culture, Tourism and Heritage. To ensure that we do this and do it right. Most of the archaeology in the province that's being done right now is cultural resource management. Which, to put it briefly, is archaeology in the face of development. So we're doing our due diligence to protect archaeological resources before they're disturbed by construction, by development. And that's where the process of an archaeological resource impact assessment comes into play. And that's, we usually do a, it's usually a phased approach to an archaeological assessment. So we start by doing a desktop study, which Jeff alluded to earlier. So we look at old maps, documents, photographs. We engage with the Mi'kmaq community because there are a lot of elders and knowledge holders. There's a lot of oral tradition in the Mi'kmaq community that we don't find in in documentary sources. And at the same time, as part of that phase, we normally do a field reconnaissance as well. So we go out and we we walk the site. We look at elements of the landscape. We tried to get a sense of, is there are there archaeological resources on the surface that are obvious? Things like old foundations and wells and that sort of thing. But also, is there potential for buried archaeological resources that we that we can't see obviously on on the surface? So then we, in that instance, we we can go to another phase where we we do some subsurface excavation. It's not always, you know, a big scale excavation. It could just be some some lower level shovel testing to get a sense of the potential for what might be underneath the surface. And if we do find something, then normally the preferred approach is to avoid those resources. But obviously, that's not always not always feasible, depending on the nature of the project. So in that case, we try to come up with a plan to mitigate those resources, or at the very least to record them as much detail about those resources and collect the physical evidence that's there before it is disturbed by development. And then once all of that is complete, we we file a permit which goes to the provincial regulator. And ideally, all of that happens before before ground is broken.
Yeah, I'll just jump in and say that we also do work often alongside construction in places where you aren't able to shovel test, for example, or where you shovel tested, but there's too much fill. Downtown Halifax, for example, we do a lot of monitoring because it's old parking lots. But once you start to develop them, there's a ton of archaeological resources underneath the surface. That's sort of a monitoring phase that would happen where you have an archaeologist on site whose job is to identify if there are resources being uncovered and then figure out how to mitigate them. April touched a little bit on the importance of context for us as archaeologists, because that's basically the scientific value of the item is April touched a little bit on the importance of context for us as archaeologists, because that's basically the scientific value of the item is. Where did it come from? What was around it? Where exactly was it found and in what proximity to other items? And as soon as you take one item away from a site even, you've lost the context of that item, but everything else left on the site. You now don't know that about the artifact that left. That becomes important because some artifacts are diagnostic and you can date them and others are not. So if the diagnostic artifacts get taken away, you are then left with a site that you can't really date and your interpretation is limited. And that is essentially what as archaeologists, we try to do is we try to. Well, as consulting archaeologists, we try to. Avoid sites as much as possible. That's the whole purpose of the archaeology assessment is to identify areas. And try and avoid them. If they can't be avoided and we have to do additional work. Then that is when we take all those pieces of evidence and we try and build a story or a narrative that helps us all. Know more about the past or have a better narrative and understanding of how people were living in the past. We're already working with fewer pieces than we should have because of, you know, time and climate change. And our soil is very acidic, so wooden artifacts or organic artifacts don't survive. So you have a limited number of puzzle pieces that survive to the future. And then every time there's impact, whether that's. Someone taking an artifact or a site being disturbed or excavated or. Infilled or dug up, all of those things again, keep taking away pieces of the puzzle. So we can say less and less and, and no less and less. I'd also mentioned that archaeology is a non-renewable resource. So that's really. The issue at, at heart. You can't create more. Five thousand year old or KX sites. Once the ones you have are gone, they're gone forever. Same thing with every other time period. You can't, you just can't create more of them. They're an important non-renewable resource that need to be managed and. Managing them can come with lots of benefits. Of course, there can be financial implications sometimes too, but there can be financial benefits as well. Investing in heritage and archaeology can. Can really have an impact and be a really good benefit to the local community and wider community as well. I think Jeff is probably best poised to speak more on the cultural value because. What April and I covered was mostly the sort of scientific value of the items. Which of course is not their total value. They have massive cultural value as well.
It's a lot of the artifacts that date back, like when we talk about the Tuscat, there's. Artifacts there and sites that are dating back six thousand years. So if you think about it, that's, that's older than the Bible, guys. Right? There's. Some of the habitation sites are there that are showing, we're showing artifacts that are two thousand years old. Right through to five to six thousand years old. So there's a consistent, continuous. Occupation through that area. So the Tuscat and the Yarmouth, a lot of people like the burners are oldest site, thirteen thousand five hundred years old. We have artifacts that are on the Mersey system that are ten thousand years old. Now we have here the Tuscat system. That we know six thousand years and I know there's older sites and what we're doing is just surface collecting. So some of these sites and burial sites that we're finding are very culturally significant. That it's. The issues we're having with looters and different aspects around, it's, it's very heartbreaking. I know there's nobody on this call that would, or anybody appreciate having. Into a graveyard and digging up. That's the, like, it's just unheard of. It's ludicrous. Nobody would do that in a graveyard through town. It's the same thing for us and we're. A lot of our culture has been expropriated over the years. Been taken away through residential schools, through colonial approach. That we're trying to educate and move things forward. So we have youth. The people that come along and find an artifact, they pick it up and they know. No one's touched this artifact for two thousand years plus. That their direct, direct descendants, that this is their ancestors that built this. And some of our youth that feel this and see this, it's just. You can't explain that the feeling that you get from it. It's, it's just. It's mind blowing when you see somebody's youth and even our elders that end up picking up and see that their ancestors had had these that long ago. So the cultural piece, very huge. Scientific is just as, just as important, but like Courtney and April says, once it's gone. Then the province looks at it differently and say, oh, well, yeah, no, it's. Or the site's been destroyed. We can show you examples on Nova Scotia power sites that has been destroyed. Within parking lots and whatnot, but are still finding artifacts. Like Courtney said, downtown Halifax, she was part of a burial site, a big one and. Around a church and whatnot has been. And I won't get into, that's another story for another day, but her and April was part of that. And that was very spiritually. For them as well, like it's, it's, you start finding skulls and bones and different artifacts. You want to make sure things are done properly. I know everybody feels the same way. But as, as we go forward. We can sit here and I can, I can, I can ramble on for a long time, right? About archaeology and. And but you're not going to get anybody better, smarter with Courtney and April. They're. The other thing is they, they, they're taking it upon themselves to work and move forward with the Mi'kmaq. Is they understand where we're coming from. That is not just. A one-sided approach. You have to look at it's too wide seeing. Albert Marshall pointed the term too wide seen. You have to look at it through both eyes, both lenses. I'll go ahead and keep rambling on, but I'll let Courtney jump back in and. And you'll see like something behind me, this is from a private collection. From here in Yarmouth. So what happens is it turns into. A culture of looting. So there's people not only here with Yarmouth, right across the province that. Generations and generations have gone, like this collection you see behind me, the family has collected from the thirties on. So and back then it's, it wasn't illegal to do that. But they have the collections, a beautiful collection. I bet you they have five or six hundred pieces. It's just amazing what this one family has and. Nothing, nothing against the family. But there's so many cultural teachings that has been lost. Because this is on, in somebody's basement or in somebody's attic or put away that. Their Mi'kmaq teachings and our elders have the stories and have that, but they can't teach it passed on to our youth, next generations. Because somebody has them. So part of that is working through all this is being able to not only, as April and Courtney says, to educate everybody. Let's work together, right? And you hear the term, like, we're all treaty people. We're all here together. Nobody's going anywhere. Mi'kmaq is not going anywhere. You guys aren't going anywhere. So it's better for us to work together, work to collaborate of building those bridges so that we're doing everything right and on the same.
So.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say a couple of things like Jeff's point about the collection that's behind him. I just want to say about Tuscat in particular, the information we had about Tuscat prior to the work. That happened in 2021 was that there were somewhere on the reservoir, eight sites. And the only reason we knew about them was because of collectors or looters passing that information on to some archaeologists in the nineteen eighties. There'd never been a proper archaeology assessment done. And after the work that we did last year, we identified over eighty sites. Mi'kmaq sites alone. There were another, I think twenty or thirty that were historic in nature. Many of those are just stone walls. But it's a, a really important landscape that if you don't have an archaeology assessment, you don't know about. That's what we see in the province now with consulting being. Development archaeology being the main archaeology is that places where there's development happening and those developments are conducting archaeology. That's where we are finding more sites and learning more. And sometimes you'll see places where there are no known sites. That doesn't mean there's no sites there. It often just means there have not been developments that have done archaeology. I also wanted to mention Jeff talked about. Collaboration and working together. The earlier you do that, the better in your process. It allows you time to figure out what the concerns and the issues are. Come up with ways to address them. For example, we knew that there was the potential to find burial items. Because of items that are in people's collections in their basements. I've seen them. A few people who've invited me to look at their things and they have items that were our grave goods that would have been buried with somebody. Five thousand years ago, four thousand, three thousand, somewhere around there. And they're now in their basement. And so we knew that there was a risk of finding those items. From an archaeology perspective, this is something that has kind of changed. In the past, in the twentieth century, those items were considered archaeology, considered artifacts. And today they're very much more considered a grave good or burial item. Across, I've worked on historic cemeteries as well, moving a historic cemetery. Everything within that burial was considered a burial item, part of the grave. It stayed with the human remains. It wasn't considered an item. It didn't, or an artifact. It didn't go to the museum. So we. Knew we wanted to follow a similar approach, but we reached out to Acadia and they helped us develop a protocol for us to follow that everybody was happy with. It went very smoothly. We did have to employ it several, several times this year or last year. It meant that as archaeologists, we recorded enough information to provide the scientific value of the item. But Jeff was able to take care of the item culturally and they remain in his care. So we were able to meld both the cultural care and the scientific care of the item together under this protocol, but. It would have been much more difficult to do that if the first time we had to think about it was when I called somebody. That we'd found one and it's four o'clock on a Friday. What do I do? So forethought's really important, especially when dealing with potentially sensitive sites and issues. I think those were sort of the main points. I do have a few images I can show. Screen. Okay, so I just wanted to sort of start off with this map, which is Yarmouth is sort of down here. It's this little end of the province, but there's no roads. I've removed all the roads. And that allows us to get a better understanding of the landscape. Five hundred years ago. Back then, the roads were the rivers and the lakes and the coast. And that's how people were moving through the landscape. People were able to move really quickly. From the shoreline, from the coast to lakes in the interior, to rivers in the interior, and then even further. And when you portage, you can go incredible distances. You can go from Tuscat up to Kedgi. There's a really intricate web of essentially roads through all these watercourses. People living in the past back then, they would have known them just as well, probably better than we know our roads and our towns today because they didn't have Google Earth. And they knew exactly where to go for different resources. But certainly very reliant on watercourses. And that's one place that. In general, I would flag if you're doing work around rivers and watercourses or lakes or the coast, those are generally higher potential areas. There's certainly archaeology sites away from shorelines and, and water. But these are certainly places that, for example, the Department of Transportation and Public Works, I think is their name now, the provincial transportation department. They do an archaeology assessment as part of their environmental assessment for every single bridge that they are replacing or redeveloping. We've done some in the Yarmouth area in the last couple of years, actually. So when thinking about archaeology, definitely be thinking about your waterways for sure. So I just want to share a few images of things we found in Acadia's territory last year. They, I'm going to start, I guess, with the historic period. The historic period is, can be tricky sometimes to identify whether a piece of plate or ceramic. Belongs to a certain cultural group because by a certain point, everybody was using the same plates and the same dishes. But prior to that time, pretty distinctive. Historic artifact that's typically associated with Mi'kmaq occupation are trade beads. We did find, I think we're up to like twelve or fifteen. Some of them are very tiny. This little blue one is only like two millimeters wide. They're probably from somewhere sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred. We're still trying to do a lot of research. On all the items we found. That's an important part of archaeology is, I think April touched on it, is the documentation. Because we recognize as archaeologists that everything we do is destruction. So even me taking these items away, I'm destroying the site when I do that. That's why it's so important for me to document it incredibly well. We had survey equipment so that we could take the individual point of artifacts, which is accurate down to like a couple of centimeters. Photos, notes, mapping, that's all incredibly important. Is arguably the most important part of archaeology because without that documentation. Nobody can go and dig up the site again that I've already dug up. So they have to rely on my documentation to be able to reconstruct what I did and what I found. This next item. This is a piece of Mi'kmaq pottery. This sort of black object here. I really like this piece. It would have been made probably with local clay and then you'd mix in some kind of grit or temper. So that it wouldn't become too brittle when you fired it. You can sort of see all these striations on it. Those aren't decoration. That's actually impressions from sweetgrass. That's what you would use to smooth out the inside of your pot or your bowl. Ceramic, Mi'kmaq ceramic dates from. Archaeologists like to make, put things in categories. So the most recent category in the pre-contact period is from three thousand to five hundred years ago. And it's called the woodland period or the ceramic period. And that's. One of the hallmarks of it is the introduction of ceramic. So that's the rough age range for this item. Once we have a bit more of a chance to analyze the artifacts again and look at the dates of other items found on the site, we might be able to narrow it a little bit further. These items are also from the same time period. They're both projectile points is what we would call them as archaeologists or. Smaller ones would be arrowheads and larger ones would probably be spearheads or knives. They're both corner notched, but you can see they're very different. These are some of the stylistic differences that we can use to try and date them. And narrow them down. So, and they're both of different material. They're both of, of a type of chert, but the chert itself is very different. That's the type of stone that it is. Chert is not naturally occurring in Yarmouth County anywhere. Most of it comes from the Minas Basin area. So people would go there to collect chert. And bring it home to make, make into artifacts, make into tools for their use. And then these guys, these. And then these guys, these are three woodland period points. They all came from the same site. A very tiny site. This was one of the new ones that we identified. It's also a site that I don't believe had ever been picked over by anybody because it was probably small and easy to miss. We found, like I said, three projectile points in a pretty small area. You don't often see that on the surface because those are the exact type of things that get picked up by people. What's interesting about them is that all three of them are a little bit different. And all three of them are completely different lithic material. That's the sort of thing that once we start analyzing the other artifacts on the site, we might be able to say whether some of them were constructed on the site or retouched on the site. Once we look at the other artifacts, we might be able to say exactly what was happening there. But again, if one of these artifacts had been found and taken by somebody else, that would be a pretty crucial piece of information missing. I really like this little guy. This little triangular point. It's called, archaeologists call it the Levanna tradition. It just sort of refers to an area where these have been typically found. But they are sort of middle to late woodland, so like 1300 years ago to 600 years ago. And you can see it's broken and we actually found both of those pieces within two meters of each other, just on the surface. You don't often find that when you find a broken artifact, usually that's it. You don't find the rest of it. That's pretty cool. This guy is a meadow wood type of point, has a box base is the terminology and it's been side notched. It's from around 2,500 years to 800 years ago. And it is the only diagnostic artifact from that site where it came from. So again, without that, we'd have no way of dating the rest of the site. This guy I wanted to put in because I feel like a lot of people probably would never pick that up. But if you did pick it up and examine it really closely, it's actually been pecked and ground to make a small groove around the whole side. So that you could secure it to your net. It's a net weight. And it dates from the terminal archaic period, so around 3,500 to 2,500 years ago. And this guy is another sort of piece of groundstone or peck stone. They're more difficult to date. It probably would have been the head for an axe or an ad. They're very similar. An axe is sort of straight on the half of the straight on the shaft like this and an ad is this way, very similar. That is an indication of woodworking. You have those sorts of tools for chopping down wood. You can also get gouges for hollowing things out. We start to see these items appear in the archaic period and they're associated with more woodworking and with things like building dugout canoes. Canoes themselves don't survive, but we see the tools that tell us what people were starting to do. As we move backwards in time a little bit, this is a projectile point that is quite large. It's over 10 centimeters. So it probably would have been a spear. It dates from sometime in the archaic to early woodland. We're still doing a bit of research on it. It might be a little bit earlier, but somewhere around 4,000 to 2,000 years ago. And then this one is possibly a Deena tradition. Again, it's just another category that archaeologists like to use. 3,500 to 13,000 years before present. It's also the only projectile point from that site. Everything else were flakes. So again, without that item, we wouldn't be able to date that site. And then this guy is an Otter Creek point. This is one of the earliest. It's a spearhead. It's also quite large and it dates from 6,000 to 4,000 years before present. And the last one is, we're still doing some research on this, but it seems to be a stark Neville style, which is middle archaic, maybe somewhere around 7,000 to 6,000 years before present. That's probably the earliest artifact that we have so far from the area. And that's my last artifact, but just to put it sort of in context, I guess. Things like the Great Pyramid, the Great Pyramid's 4,500 years old. And these are six to 7,000 years old. So on a lot of these sites, we're seeing artifacts that date from the archaic period through the woodland period into the historic period. So those are sites where people have been returning to them for thousands and thousands and thousands of years. Generations upon generations, every year, every few years, returning to the same spot to fish or make camp or do any variety activities. But always in that same spot, we see people returning again and again and again. That's a really, really sort of strong cultural landscape that's been forming for, you know, five, six, 7,000 years plus. And we're probably just not seeing the earlier stuff because the landscape has changed so much that we're looking in the wrong spot, but still buried under more soil, that sort of thing. But it's a very, it's a very long-lived cultural landscape. Very rich in archaeological resources in South, southwestern Nova Scotia, in particular, on these major waterways like Tuscat, like the Mersey. Any of your big, big river systems are just really important landscapes. Sure. Take Jeff.
Thanks, Gorgio. I was actually, I was gonna do the same thing about if you put it in global context, the pyramid, the Great Wall of China, right? Or, or Jesus, it's the same thing, right? Our Bible, like this is, these artifacts are older and everybody puts in perspective, oh, I would seen Great Wall of China. I seen, yes, it's old and it's very significant and it's great. But these artifacts are older than that. So it's just proof that of Mi'kmaq has been here since time immemorial. And we move forward and, and having that recognition of the cultural importance and cultural landscape is you can, I can't say it enough, right? And is, is if you know any archaeologists, they love to talk about digging and moving things forward. And I'll tell you right up front, guys, I was at McLeod, lastly, she works, she's our archaeologist, works for Can Cano and you changed me because I was dead against archaeologists. Now, right now, I wouldn't, I don't know where I'd be today if it wasn't for the archaeologists I lean on, Courtney, April's, there's 12 of them. They if there's any work that needs to be done, please get these guys to do the work, right? Especially when around, because they know what they're doing. They're brilliant. They're very compassionate and they understand and they move forward. Working collaboratively, there, you can't. We have another archaeology that does the same, the same thing. There's other archaeology consultants in the provinces lots and they're trying to move forward. But Davis and McIntyre are one of them and Boris is another one of the you guys, they have reached, they're gone above and beyond. There's, there isn't a time that I can't call on April or on Courtney if there's something I don't know and it's and, and trust me, it happens, but Nova Scotia Power and the work on the Tuscat Dam. It was supposed to be done three or four years ago. And we're still here and they've got an extension March before they have to rewater. That extension is not going to do anything for a month for the amount of water that's coming down through now and precipitation we're getting this year. So it'll be drained again next year if I as we're moving forward. I'm hopefully pandemics put a, a stop on this and, and hopefully with the restrictions lifting, I'm going to be able to do another presentation for the Tuscat community at the fire hall. If anybody wants to come in and have that, that talk and have April and Courtney there to give a presentation of the local community around. It's all about education and moving forward. We talk about the Special Protection Places Act. You'll see some of the signs around. It's a $10,000 fine. It's not a speeding ticket, right? How many, how many people do you know that can snap their fingers? Oh yeah, it's only $10,000. I can't. I don't have that kind of money to, to pay for, for, for destroying an archaeology site. Well, it doesn't have to be Mi'kmaq, any, any archaeology site. The Special Protection Places Act protects. So I can, I can ramble on. Is there any questions, you guys? I know it's, it's quite a
Patty, Patty had one that I see for first and then I see Sherry. So I'm going to let Patty go ahead and ask her question. We'll move on from there.
Thank you so much, Jeff, Courtney and April. I really appreciate the education on this. I have learned a lot. So with the Special Places Protection Act, if artifacts are found in a specific area, that means that that area is not allowed to be excavated? Is that correct?
It, there's a lot of variables there. I'll let April, if it's Mi'kmaq, that we have to look at it, at it differently because there's, there's a burial site on, in the Tuscat system that's 6,000 years old, that we can work with landowners and we've had other landowners in the past. It's their land, they pay the taxes onto it. That's great. But because it's a cultural significance, we can work with them to help and with the municipalities to try to protect these areas. Right? So through those are conversations that need to be had with some of the private landowners.
Thank you. So artifacts that are found now, are they left in this culturally sensitive area or are they removed?
Some are taken. So right now, what Courtney and her crew and April, what they're doing is only surface collecting. There's no excavating open pits. If there's an open excavating pit is they have to mediate the area. And you look at, I can use for Gaspro Lake, Nova Scotia Power had a site there and they spent billions of dollars trying to rework and remove things around the walls and whatnot to avoid any impact on the sites. And because Gaspro was such a significant site, if you've probably seen it in the news here recently, they had to shut it down. It's so massive that they couldn't, they couldn't put a wall, it couldn't redo anything without hurting or destroying any sites whatsoever.
Yeah. So I'll just, I'll just jump in and say it sort of depends on a lot of different factors when you're talking about, okay, it's a site, what can we do? Because some of it is going to depend on what type of site it is and, and how old it is. There's an awful lot more house foundations from houses that were built in the 1840s than there are sites that are 5,000 years old. So with something like that, we've done lots of work for highway twinings where they, they've been a ton of old foundations. Usually you do sort of some limited excavation to get a sample to try and record what's there, get a sample of artifacts and have some record of that feature before it's destroyed. If we found historic artifacts on the surface, we'd probably collect a sample of things that are diagnostic. But with Mi'kmaq sites, because they are typically rarer and older and so many of the Mi'kmaq sites that we currently know about are, have been completely lost to climate change, erosion, looting or development. There'd be a lot more considerations for that type of project. You might have to do full-scale formal excavation of the area you're going to impact. It would be a lot of discussions about what the options are and discussions to bring in the local Mi'kmaq community on as well.
And so some of that testing is, could be as simple as a shovel test. Right? So what archaeology is doing, Courtney, April, correct me whatever wrong is, there's a grid, a square grid they do. So in every, every so many meters, there's a hole, a hole depending on the area and they'll get the information of how old, as you go down through your layers of soil, those different colorations of soil will tell you how old, how far, how far down you go will tell you exactly how many years that is. So they find an artifact and a lot of part, if you're like behind me, you think, okay, that's artifacts. But a lot of times it's just a little tiny flake that's still proof of pre-contact because some of like, we found some, some flakes here is Courtney said earlier, is not from Yarmouth or not even from Nova Scotia. Some of these flakes come from either down in Maine or northern Labrador. So those trade routes would have been back and forth. So it's, you're not finding, the materials are not just from here, they're right across outside of the province as well.
Sherry, Lauren, then Trevor.
My question is though, in Tuscat right now, we know weather is not so great. So there probably aren't a lot of people out and about in there. You know, this, this was a significant issue, you know, in the past. How are you going to mitigate this spring when the weather is nice and how do you prevent looters from such a wide expanse of shoreline from doing what they're doing? I mean, you mentioned, you know, the session, you know, the fire hall and that's, you know, we'll get a certain component or certain amount, you know, demographic. But how, how do you prevent it in such a large area?
So what we have right now, besides the archaeologists, when you go around, archaeologists are very visible. They have bright orange, red vests on. We also have monitors that travel around and protect and watch the sites. I've got cameras on all the sites, even as today, like right now you see the snow, we're, we're happy to see the snow because it's covered, protected, protecting the sites for its paint. But I've got cam, live cameras all the way around, large signs put up around, no looting. Special Places Act, minimum $10,000 fine. So working with Nova Scotia Power and having a collaborative agreement of it's, they have, they have a responsibility because they, they destroyed and take, took the land away. That they have, working with us, that we have monitors. Right now I just have a skeleton crew because I don't need 12, 12, 15 monitors driving around summertime. I do because it's more active. I have people on the water that will watch the sites. This is from all daylight hours. We've even had people during the evenings at night, walking down on the site, looking, looking for artifacts. And they, and literally to try to educate them. Unfortunately, some people think it's their right to take the artifacts. Very disheartening, but they will go down even they run away from our monitors, just want to go down and try to educate, try to say, hey, guys, like you know, you're not supposed to be down here. This is protected plate, protected area. They still don't care.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, Lauren, Lauren's online with you, Jeff. He's gonna ask you a question, then Trevor.
Hey, Mr. Ward. Thanks, Jeff and Courtney and April for your information you presented. There's a couple of questions I have. First one, the maybe is a is a little lengthy, but I think it's worthwhile for me to ask. Are you suggesting, three of you, are you suggesting that if a section of undisturbed land is going to be offered for construction, should an archaeological assessment be done before any type of construction started? Doesn't matter if it's, if it's a known or an unknown site. That way, because if a person turns around and buys say a 10 acre site and they want to build something there and all of a sudden they start digging, they come up with something and all of a sudden, wow, they're shut down, they spent money and so it's, it's advisable to get an assessment done first. Is that correct?
Absolutely. You should be doing some type of assessment. I know it's a little harder with private land because people go in and do it, but when you're working with municipalities, provincial, federal government, they, they have to do it regardless and would be simple as forestry. Like I mentioned earlier, but if, if you're doing it and/or if you know there's a site, and/or if you know there's a site, it's a lot easier to do the education right up front. Because some of our burial sites now in Tuskegee, we have a, a really large burial site there. It's private land and luckily the landowner is working well with us and letting us cross the land and working back and forth. But it also puts in perspective of, okay, you don't want this destroyed.
Right, right.
Gotcha.
Part, part two of my question is, um, you're, you're, uh, Courtney and April are dating back, uh, thousands and thousands of years. How I, how actually do you, do you, uh, determine the age of a, of an artifact?
Yeah, so it's, it's all based on typologies. So in the 20th century, archaeologists got really into categorizing and um, lumping artifacts together. And then you look at the sites those artifacts came from, where there's been radiocarbon dating. So you can say, okay, we found this type of projectile point in a feature that was radiocarbon dated to 2,500 years ago. Okay, but this type was radiocarbon dated to this date. So it's pulling in a ton of information and this is information from all across like the northeast, um, down New England, you know, into Ontario. Um, because technology and trade, uh, technology travels along trade routes and so do some of these projectile point styles and evolution. Um, so it's pulling together a ton of different information um, and building on that existing literature. So we haven't seen any charcoal, we haven't, don't have any samples to radiocarbon date. So we're relying on what people have done in the past and the dating that they've come up with.
Okay, so would it be a, uh, I'm assuming, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, that it's probably a costly venture to go down to determine all this, the hire the archaeologist coming in and determine all this, is it not?
So like, it certainly can be depending on what the assessment is. So, um, for, if you have a, if you have an assessment that ends in finding the Nova Scotia Museum is the place those artifacts ultimately go currently, under the current legislation. And the, um, community culture, tourism and heritage require us to catalog all of those artifacts, to have them all cleaned, um, to, um, you know, have identified the things that we can identify and to write a report. Everything has to come with a report that gives some interpretation. So if you've got a site where you've only got 25 artifacts, that of course is not going to take very long. If you've got a site where you've got 5,000 artifacts, which some sites do have that many. Um, yeah, so it just, it's, it, it's really variable because it kind of depends on, um, how much material culture you have from a site, how big it is, um, that sort of thing.
There's, there's times that there's only doing the tabletop exercise and doing the background check as well, that, that, so it, it, like Courtney says, it varies from, from site to site. There are some sites that, you know what, you, they can, you can mediate anything by doing the history and tabletop exercise and say, okay, here it is, we've spoken with, if it's a MIGMA site, spoken with the community, did this, did this, we don't know of any, there's nothing there. We've walked the ground, walked the site, we don't see anything that's, that's jumping out at us. So there is, there is, it's depending on, this spectrum from very quickly can be done to Nova Scotia Power, that very large.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say too, conversely, if you don't do that archaeological assessment beforehand, Jeff alluded to, um, a site earlier where the province went in and excavated a site only to find out later or excavate an area, which they found out later had an archaeological site on it. If they had hired an archaeologist in the beginning to do the archaeological assessment, they probably would not have chosen to disturb that area. But now they are in a position where they need to mitigate the resources that they've disturbed, which is proving to be much more costly than it would have if they had just done the initial assessment and chosen another site.
Absolutely, that's exactly what April was saying. If you do it up front, we could have went in, mediated the site, say, no, you can't, don't build here because you're going to destroy this site. Build over 50 feet that way. And working with the other engineers and whatnot, they could have built, could have built the, the barn and and the infrastructure they needed to, but they chose not to do that. And now it's costing them a, a very large amount more to, to go through there. So it's, and they're, they're sitting there with their tail between their legs. We even get comments of, well, it's already destroyed, can we build it anyhow? No, sorry, you can't. Not until the archaeologies or, or for Davis Mack, when they win. Everything has to be, they have a, a, a large, uh, tailing, a large pile where it was excavated. Everything has to be dug out properly and then sifted through. So it's, it's a lot, it's a bigger cost after the fact than it is to be proactive.
Trevor, then Nick.
Right, thank you, everybody. Uh, Trevor Cuny, I'm Deputy Warden. Um, thank you, excellent presentation. And, uh, I mean, what I'm hearing and agreeing with is, is an individual counselor is, is that, uh, you know, we're, we're gonna do our due diligence. Um, you know, we're, we're one level of government, municipal government. And, uh, obviously we're here to, to, to follow all the legislation we're can and can with community partners like AFN and, and, uh, so I mean, I, 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 I think the obvious next step, given what we've heard is to, is to undertake the, the assessment. So council will be looking at that and, uh, that's, that's part of the project. And I'm, I'm also the counselor for Hebron Dayton, so I'm, I'm excited to, uh, to see what we find out. So, uh, it'll, it'll be interesting journey we'll, we'll, we'll have together. So thank you for the presentation and, and, uh, the education and, and, uh, certainly some of those artifacts you showed were, were tremendous interest in. And, uh, you know, the, 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 the whole piece of, of, of them being in southwestern Nova Scotia, I think is a, a part of our, a part of our, uh, very long history, uh, uh, of people being here in southwestern Nova Scotia and, and the First Nations people were, were here many thousands of years ago and it's quite a story to tell. So I hope we learn more along the way. So thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. And this, that's the other thing is, and don't be scared to, to reach out, right? Got no problem. I, I, I really feel that building, building these relationships and building these bridges can only benefit the municipality and the, and the MIGMA community as we move forward. If you move forward together and you build a strong relationship, any hard conversation no longer becomes hard. We can, you, you, you have a, a trust and a relationship, you move forward and you, and you come to an understanding and we can build that, that's very easy to build. I, I spent over 18 years with Department of Fisheries and I ended up leaving those guys because, and I'll say this to anybody, DFO is one of the racist departments I've ever worked for in my life. They, they didn't get it, wouldn't listen, very colonial approach. You have to get away from the colonial approach that it just, it drives me insane. There's a collaborative of working together, that's what you need to do. And we can do that, I know we can. I see lots of great, smart people around the table that want to move this forward. And we do what's right. Who knows where, what, what we can build.
And just if I might interject, the Warden, uh, i- if, if you could, uh, please send along those dates for the, uh, for the, for the fire hall meeting, I, I'd love to attend in person.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Once, uh, once we get a set down, I'm just, uh, right now, I'm just waiting for, uh, for the restrictions to lift. And then what I'll do is I'll make Nova Scotia Power to send out, you know, it'll be sent out to all the local residents around because it's, they're the ones getting affected the most. But word of mouth will spread, I will make sure that you guys will know when the, when we have those meetings. Courtney and April will be there to, as well with bringing in some of the artifacts that we found. When we say artifacts, you talked about earlier, like you, you don't, you can't put in flakes or chipping, so when they're, when an artifact was being made. I'm gonna guess here, I don't know the exact number, Courtney and April, you're gonna tell me from right or wrong? But I'm, I'm gonna guess we're probably north of 10,000 pieces.
Yeah, we haven't finished cataloging them yet because there's a lot. Um, but yeah, I would say you could not be wrong. It's possible you're somewhere around there, yeah.
Yeah, so when you, when you think about it, and I just wanted to throw that in and just to put it in perspective of how many pieces that were only found by, with Courtney and April and these guys. And right at the beginning, when the water started being dewatered, we had to get April and Courtney down right away because we were finding signs of looters before the water even was down. And there's, and they're not, and the water's not even down completely. They were still holding back, was holding back 17 feet of water for fish passage. So that's not down to the original level. And there's, there's, there's areas that right at the edge of the water, Courtney's still finding artifacts of French trading beats, older artifacts. But you can't get out in the water to see. But if that water went down, you'd find a lot more artifacts to be uncovered.
Much appreciated. Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jeff, for the presentation. And, uh, you know, you've been involved, um, with some other presentations recently here at the municipality. And you know, we're on a, um, we're learning together and building that relationship together. But then when you, you know, you sign into the meeting, um, today, and the first part of that is about us excavating land and not having that initial conversation, you know, that, that weighed on me a little bit. Um, and I heard what you were saying. So I guess my question to you is, um, you know, from a policy standpoint, when is the best part, when, when, when would be the time to have that initial discussion? And how can we build that into our, um, our process? Um, and what would, maybe would that look like? And is there other municipalities that have done something along that lines already?
Courtney or, or April, if you guys might be able to tell me, there's other municipalities that have besides maybe Halifax? Because there's under, under CCT, like, I still say CCH, Canadian Culture and Heritage and Tourism. Change your government, change your name, right? There's a, a red zone within around Halifax because, because of, uh, some of their designated spots that they have to be very careful of. There's no other, other red zones within the province, to my knowledge. Courtney and April, you guys correct me if I'm wrong. But having that moving forward and developing that policy exactly is, I get, and I have to apologize because I do get worked up and I'm very compassionate about archaeology and very compassionate of making sure things are done right and building that, building that relationship with all levels of government so that we move forward together. I, I wouldn't want to have any of our elders or any, any, anybody come back at the municipality or any government saying, sorry, we didn't know, we didn't, we didn't reach out or we didn't do it right. Right? We all want to do what's right, we all want to move forward on that right foot. And I, and having that conversation, I think, I can, I can come down anytime. I don't know, the same with, uh, Courtney and April, they would have no issue saying, okay, here's, it's, here's the, the type of policy, your type of assessment that we need to do and you get added, added into it as you're moving forward. Very, that can be done very easily.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be in terms of when to like do an archaeology assessment. Um, I would say in your design phase at some point, but far enough along in your design phase that you kind of know where your impact area is. Um, or if you have a couple of options for an impact area or a footprint. Um, if you're about to start construction in a week, that's too late. Um, or if you're so early in the process, like we've been asked to do assessments for like areas that are 2,000 acres. Like, how can you, you can't like, that's too big. So once you have an idea of what you're gonna do and approximately where you're gonna do it or where your options for doing it are, that's a good time. Because the archaeology might help you narrow down your options and say, there's a really high potential spot there. So redesign to avoid it or pick your second option because that will be more cost efficient and less damaging to the archaeology, that sort of thing.
Yeah, we, we've had, Nova Scotia Power has to refurbish the six dams on the Mersey system. And we're talking about doing, uh, fish passage right now. And there's three options on the table and we're trying to work our way through that and make sure that it doesn't impede on any archaeology sites. And Nova Scotia Power, of course, is saying, well, we need to do what's the cheapest way to go. So, but it's to do what's right as we move forward. So it's even for municipalities, like a lot of this infrastructure you guys are, are building is still as big, but still with getting that far ahead of the ball, we could do this very easily and it would, it would be very cost effective.
Yeah, I, I think that, just follow up to that. Um, I think, well, the good news is, I think that's about where we are in the Hebron project, actually. To be, you know, that might be the, the next step, so that, that may work out. But, uh, um, at the same time, we're, we're on a two-year plan to, or to update our municipal planning strategy. And it's pretty clear that, um, all the sections that we already have, we probably need one, um, um, that recognizes the importance of, of this and, and making sure that we can move forward together. So thanks again.
No, thank you. And this is the cultural importance of, of the area, right? So that we don't forget this, it, MIGMA, Acadians, everybody is, is working together. And, and for down in this area, we have a lot of Acadians, a lot of French, and, and people forget MIGMA and the French are allies. So we need to move, we, we need to look at that history and look at that past of us moving together and, and not throwing that away.
And I was just gonna jump in and say, your question about other municipalities, um, that, some of them are doing it. Some of them are doing it for some projects and not others. Um, it's certainly very variable. It's increasing and has been across all levels of government. The legislation was written in 1980, it has never been updated. So, um, it's only slowly been coming on different departments' radars. So like the Transportation Department didn't used to do archaeology assessments 15 or 20 years ago, um, very routinely. And now it is a part of pretty much every project they do for twinning or for bridges. There are other projects that they don't typically do archaeology for that they probably should be doing archaeology for. And there's continuing discussions about that with like the Government Departments, um, Communities, Culture, Tourism and Heritage. Um, but it's something that we're seeing more and more, uh, levels of government um, considering and considering doing earlier in the process as well.
Yeah, and some municipalities, I believe, are building it into their development application process. So I, I think in HRM, for example, I think when you submit a development application, there is that archaeology piece that has to go with it.
Yeah, currently the municipality is currently going through our municipal planning strategies and language bylaws. And it, and the next point, we could certainly add a little caveat in there to, uh, historical value or reference or, or stuff like that. So that could easily be put in as, as a precursor to something like that. Um, Jeff, I, I do have a question for you. You had mentioned something and, and I was wondering this because I do travel by that site every day on my way to work to Tuskegee. Um, and lake level, uh, the lake level has never been fully dropped. They, they've held that back, have they not?
Yeah, it, it's, it's held back, like I say, you go by there today, the, the, there's probably, oh, it's gotta be 20, somewhere between 20 and 23 feet. I'd have to reach out to NSP to ask them what it, what it is. But right now, today, the, what they're holding back is around 20, 23. As, as, and it takes, takes a couple of weeks before it drops back down. But this time of year, with the precipitation that we get.
Yeah, the water, the water's really high right now. As a matter of fact, uh, where they were building the, trying to, to, to find over water intrusion was the water had actually gone up over the embankment that Nova Scotia Power built just below the, uh, the old dam. So, yeah. It, it's, it's amazing the amount of water that we've had over this, uh, this past summer and, and fall and winter, we've had a lot of water this year.
Yeah, we, we certainly have. And that's the, and that's, and that's, as for archaeology, it's even, it's, it's harder because it's only surface collection. But every time that water fluctuates up and down, it washes and erodes your soil and it exposes more. So that's, it's really hard and, and every time, every time that water goes up and down, where Courtney, you know, and her crew and April, they gotta send, send the crew down here to do a spot check to make sure that, and go around.
Yes. So Jeff, there was also mentioned too, when you guys, when COVID does lift and when you guys do decide to have the, the meeting in the Lakeview Fire Hall, I'd certainly love to see the, that information forwarded and and I'll certainly get the word out on my social media page and even to the municipality district area that that's coming up because one thing that's, that's for sure is we're going to make sure that we protect the, the ancient burial sites of the first people that were here, the Acadian or the, the Mi'kmaq nation and stuff like that. So absolutely. Is there any more questions from anyone else? Well, I don't know if Lauren didn't put his hand down or he left it up. So
I put my hand up again, I did. Do you mind if I ask one more question?
Ask away.
Going back to any type of assessment and whatnot, do you guys have a an area plan or an area view or an area of known burial sites, archaeology sites that are not starting yet and I've been that, that that are out there? So that a person is going to buy a piece of land or do some work. They can go to a map and say, oh, well, there's, there's a site here. We better be careful there. We better find more about it and so on. Is there any, any type of information like that?
We, we have some stuff. A lot of stuff is not seen. And to, to be honest with you, if we put, we have a lot of traditional use maps made, but if we put it out there, it's promoting looting and promoting of theft. You know what I mean? So if we, if we, we share that with the archaeology and we share that with people, but it's, it's still very, very confidential of where a lot of stuff is.
All right. Yeah, I understand that. Sure.
And from the archaeology perspective, the Nova Scotia Museum, they curate a database called the Maritime Archaeological Resource Inventory. Every time we find a site, we have to fill out a form and report it to them and they enter it in their database. You can get a license to go in and see the entries in the database, but they will vet who gets a license and it's basically archaeologists doing archaeology assessments. We use it as part of our desktop study, but it isn't a, a public resource, even though I can totally see how it could be useful because of concerns about site visitation and looting is the main reason it's not public.
Right. Yes, okay. High level, if you look, this is Rosignol, this is the Bursey. You see how thick that is? Red sites, all these dots. And this is an update. This is an older map. Right? So you see all these dots around. This is Sowasnova, right? Even out on the end of Digby Neck, all the way around. Then this is very, but the thing is, once people start seeing that, their, your collectors try to go out and find, find the areas. Even we have a burial site in Queenstown in Midway that's over two thousand years old with headstones. I've had people wanted to go and steal the headstones.
No.
Right? So we have to be very, very careful. It's
Thank you.
Just to, just like, and you look at this one, this is a snapshot of the Mersey River. These are, that's all, all site. Right? It's, it's, if we had the time and the money to do the same thing for Yarmouth, I know you would find the same amount of artifacts, site, art sites and whatnot, like Courtney and April said, like just in Tuskegee, we're up to eighty recorded sites now. Just in, in, in just in that reservoir, that's in, on those three lakes. Right from very small to very large. And that's not including going up through the waterways, your old traditional canoe routes, your old, all the other inland going through because the inlands were the highways that traveled back and forth. So it's
Thank you.
I see. I get, I get very compassionate. I'm also a captain on the Mi'kmaq Grand Council, Councilor, or Mi'kmaq Traditional Government. So, and I'm the archaeology liaison for Grand Council as well. So I get, I get very compassionate, very excited when I'm educating and, and helping. And I, I have wonderful people like Courtney and April that don't want to kick me under the table and say, Jeff, you're wrong. We got to do it this way. So we, we have a great working relationship. And that's the end, the end off is I can ravel on forever, guys, but I want that relationship stronger and built stronger with the municipality so that we move forward together. That's, at the end of the, the goal for me.
That's, that's the whole reason for meeting with you, Jeff, is to build that relationship and learn, learn from one another. And this is only the starting point of a, a relationship that I hope that grows throughout, throughout the years. So I don't see anyone else having any more questions. So Jeff, as, as you mentioned, you're going to send out that information when you have that meeting out in the Lakeview area. And if there's no more questions on behalf of the municipality district area, thank you very much for, for taking the time. And also to Adriana and sorry, to Courtney and April for, for attending and telling us a few things. And thank you very much for those pictures. That was quite educational to see the, the different types of pottery is, is one thing that I never realized. It, it, mind you, it's not as old as some of the arrowheads and stuff like that, but the pottery to me was very interesting. So once again, on behalf of council and residents in this, thank you very much.
No, no problem. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'll, I'll log off here and you guys can, I'll give you a chance to talk about me. I'll log off.
Oh, we're going home. We're going home too.
Great. You guys have a great evening and stay safe.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Take care.
All right, everyone. That's the end of our presentation. I entertain a motion to adjourn, moved by Nick, seconded by Sherry. Well, as a favor, signify by saying aye. O's.
Bye, Lauren.
Bye, Lauren. Really good.